On Facebook and I am recording now, so I know it's still one minute, but here Keith is on his way in as well. Hopefully he got his computer fixed.
Rick, um, for the length of service awards, Melanie is on board. She's got 15 years and then Jen Johnson is also here and she's got 10. And then I thought Shauna was going to be on here, but she's not yet.
Okay. And how much is Shauna?
10.
10.
And she was hired in December 20th.
No, she was 20. 2010.
Just checking Kathy.
Can you hear me now, Matt?
Uh, we can hear you now. You're good to go.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call this council work session to order. It is Wednesday, December 16th. The time is 1:00 PM. Let's uh, open it up for anybody who'd like to wish Counselor Locke and Carlson a farewell.
I'll raise my hand.
Okay.
You want me to say something also?
Yeah, we can. Yep. I figure we just kind of do that in our reports tonight, but that's fine. Go ahead.
Well, Keith gave me a whole bunch of suggestions when I first got started, which were most appropriate, most helpful, especially when you're coming on out of the cold. So thanks for the way back there, Keith.
Anytime.
Oh, look at that screen. Holy cow. That's nice, Keith.
You ought to do something with the shirt, though.
Okay, so if you'd like to make a comment, how this will work is you can raise your hand and you definitely, uh, we are going to call on you. Um, there's a lot of people here today that I'm sure want to say some nice things about our two counselors that are leaving us. Matt, are you seeing some people there?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, um, you could unmute yourself and just jump in too, I think. Do they have that ability, Matt, or do you have control?
Um, they do have the ability to do that. Noticed by hesitation.
Yes, because I'm wondering if they can't find the hand. Oh, there's Mohammed, I think, got his hand raised.
There we go.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, I just would like to take a moment and thank uh, Counselor Locke and Counselor Carlson and say that I wish I actually had the opportunity to spend more time with them. So um, they've been great from the day I got to meet them. So this is just a moment of thank you and farewell and best wishes for your next endeavors.
All right. Thank you, Mohammed.
Uh, looks like Shauna would like to say something.
Yep.
Shauna, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi there. Um, so I just wanted to say thank you to Keith and Jenny for being amazing advocates for especially our youth. Um, I really enjoyed this last 10 years working with you all and coming up with ideas and just the inclusion that you have all been a part of has been amazing. So I really have appreciated the time we've got to spend together on different boards and commissions and also in the workplace.
Uh, Kathy, do you want to go ahead and unmute yourself?
Sure. Well, I've been here for almost 20 years, so I've been here about as long as Keith was on the council. And I think Keith has really left an indelible mark on his service here. Um, you've done so much for the community uh, in ways that people don't even see. And, and I just want to say thank you for that. And also for Jenny, she's been such a tireless leader in her efforts to make things inclusive. And I don't think that that's an easy task and I'm really appreciative of that because I've learned a lot from her in that way. Her experiences and just her, her demeanor is always something that um, she just wants everybody to be involved in and to have everybody feel loved. So I just want to say I thank her for that and thank you for making an impact on my life.
I'm glad I see Jenny's here. When I first started out, uh, I learned a lot about, we'll say, the other side of town, Jenny. Mainly about the caring that is needed by the city to its citizens that you've displayed over and over again. Sometimes I wish you had a bigger stick to hit people over the head to make them do that, but you did what you did. Thanks.
Okay, uh, if you'd like to say some comments, please raise your hand or try to unmute yourself. But raising your hand, I think is going to be the way to go.
I know I would definitely like to say thank you to Jenny and Keith. I save I've only been with the city for about four, four and a half years or so. But your guidance and kind of history lessons of why things are the way they are and your guidance and how to steer and move the ship forward have been very helpful, I think. Especially for me personally coming into a job that I have and I will definitely miss seeing you throughout the, the city when we used to meet more often in person. And Jenny, I will definitely miss our conversations and everything that we go through and talk about life even after work is done. So I appreciate you both and your time and effort that you've given to your positions.
If, if I'm raising my hand, I just, I don't want to forget and I don't want to let the moment pass. You know, a lot of times when you leave a job, you still see people around. And I had the unfortunate or unique experience to be laid off from a job and then have the business closed. So you could never go back and visit and the loss of Counselor Locke is huge, not just to this council, but to this community. Someone that is tireless, working with Kat, working with all the groups in this community to try to make sure that no one's left behind and doing all that work behind the scenes. It's just, it's, I'll miss him, I'll miss his dogs, I'll miss his voice, I'll miss his calm. In all ways and it's like, I, you know, it's like, it's okay if we leave council, but I'm just, the heartbreak of seeing him leave our community is a huge loss. So I appreciate being able to have this time with you and grow as a person and grow as a city counselor with your help. And I, you will be greatly missed.
Okay, I see Margaret. Okay, Margaret.
Um, I just wanted to say to Jenny that I always appreciated your insights. One of your strengths, I think, has always been to glean ideas from other municipalities, other institutions and to bring them to our community. And so I think that that was always um, a way to benefit from the wisdom of others and their experience and I appreciated that. And I also um, always liked um, what an interest that you had taken in the library and appreciated your coming to the library as a patron. And Keith, um, I actually had an opportunity for Keith to be the counselor over the library very early on. And um, I know he's had 20 long years to contribute to the city and the community and I want to thank him for that. And my parting thought as he leaves us is just to remember Roll Tide.
Sorry about that, Margaret. If you're uh, listening in and you have some side noise, please mute yourself. Okay, uh, other people like to share? I'm looking. And if you're watching and you uh, not sure what to say, we are also going to be doing this tonight at seven as well. So feel free to come back if you um, are having a hard time finding the right words or just haven't got the nerve to step up and say something.
Well, maybe some people don't know how to do the hand raise and maybe they can figure it out between now and then.
That's what I'm thinking. I see a lot of people in here. But I see also a lot of them are also one of our presentations.
On the agenda.
Yep. Okay.
So Mayor?
Yeah.
Councilman Morton here and I'm the only councilperson who hasn't spoken. Jenny's spoken about Keith and Steve has spoken about Keith, but you asked us to hold our opinions until uh, this evening. Uh, I just want to, I just, I'll go over a bit of Keith's character and when I first met him, just a bit. And I'll go over some other kinds of things this evening. But when I first met Keith was uh, at around 2002 or uh, in, in that era. And I was racing on the six pack uh, from Portland to Astoria on a sailboat. It was my sailboat and it was a committee boat, so I was bringing it back and ran out of gas and ran out of gas down around Columbia City and I just wanted to fire up the engine so I could uh, pull into St. Helens. And um, and what I was uh, we were thinking of spending the night there. But I came in and came in under sail and uh, the first person that, the first people that we met on uh, down at St. Helens Marina was uh, were, I was instructed by Brad to get docked was three people. And I don't know who the other two people were, but the first guy to extend his hand and welcome me to the city of St. Helens was Keith Locke. Keith Locke was uh, I'll never forget it. He says, "Welcome to our community." He says, "This is, are you staying the night?" He said, and then he started going over uh, where grocery stores were and that kind of thing. And he was so warm and inviting. Uh, it was amazing and it was uh, uh, it, he, I just felt very welcomed. Had no idea who he was until uh, uh, years later and that, when I ran for council. And I go, "Oh, you were the guy down there who welcomed my boat and my crew uh, to the city and welcomed us with open arms." And uh, showed us where to go, told us what, what the city was all about. And Keith has always been an ambassador for the city. All throughout, all his commitments, all of his assignments in the last 20 years on city council, he has walked away as an ambassador. And he has done that so well and so effective uh, in doing that. And he didn't know me. I, and, and I kind of recollected on that personality and that voice and it all took me back to when I first came to St. Helens on my sailboat. And uh, uh, that's Keith, I just, I just thank you for being such a, a warm person and a welcoming agent for people visiting our town. Uh, you're, you're, you're amazing. A great ambassador. Thank you. More later, Keith.
Okay, uh, I see there's a Galaxy Tab that I think has our hand raised. It doesn't have a name for it. So we will uh, allow.
I think that's my friend.
That's your friend?
I think that's, I think that's a community friend of mine.
Matt, would you like to unmute?
Yeah, I've, I've asked the Galaxy Tab user to unmute. But they have to unmute themselves.
There they go.
There we go.
Okay. Hey, Rick. I want to say something about Miss Jenny and Keith Locke and his Oregon Duck hat.
I recognize your friend. Thank you. Go Ducks.
Uh huh.
Yep, let's see. Who else?
Mayor, I do have a short video um, that is part of the farewell message. If you're okay.
Actually, yeah, I am absolutely.
Hang on one second. And hopefully technology works.
Turn it up, Matt, if you can.
There we go.
Is anybody else hearing him?
No, no volume.
Nobody can hear Liam, so let's uh, see if we can get the volume up. We'll try this again. There you go, Matt. There you go. Now you're getting it.
It was all a great time and I'm glad I got to share these experiences with you guys.
Hey, Matt. Now you got the volume up. Let's restart that.
Hi.
Everybody quiet.
Hi Keith, uh, we're just all here to say thank you for uh, everything you've done with the youth council. Uh, we all had a great time. Uh, I remember not wanting to come and my mom made me and then it ended up being one of my favorite things. From the meetings we had, planting flowers, to cleaning out the parks. It was all a great time and I'm glad I got to share these experiences with you guys.
Thank you Jenny and Keith for giving us all the opportunity to be able to volunteer and help out in our community and trying your best to let us meet up even through this pandemic.
Um, thank you Jenny and Keith for um, yeah, like letting us work together and do something for our community. It was um, really great having you guys there. And my favorite part was doing the Christmas ships with you guys. You serve food and seeing the people happy. That was really fun.
Thank you Jenny and Keith for everything you've done for us. Um, we really appreciate it. And thank you for giving us the opportunity to volunteer. I really enjoy volunteering in the community and being a part of it.
Thank you for all the service opportunities and my favorite one was the Christmas ships. That was very fun.
Boy, if that don't bring a smile and a little bit of a tear to my eye, just uh, the youth chiming in there. That's, you guys are very inspirational to our youth and our youth council, so. But I will share that a little bit later, um, tonight. Uh, Matt, do you see anybody else? I'm just looking one more time too.
Uh, I think we are good to move forward.
Can I say something?
Yes.
It is Howard, yes.
I don't know how to raise my hand on the way you're saying, so sorry for coming in that way.
That's right.
Okay, uh, mainly I just wanted to thank Keith and Jenny for all their support of our parks and our trails and our neighborhoods and Keith for all of his hard work on the bicycle and pedestrian committee for over the years. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
All right, all right. Thank you, Howard.
Oh, sorry, Mayor, I accidentally muted you.
Yes, you did. Okay, um, if you're watching and you want to make a comment later, we will be doing this again at seven o'clock tonight. Feel free to come back to our evening session as well. I'm going to open it now for visitor comments. Outside the spectrum of saying farewell. So if you have any visitor comments, now is the time to raise your hand.
I do not see any, Mayor.
Okay, so um, next we'll do uh, employee length of service. We have Melanie Payne. Has 15 years of service to the city of St. Helens. And then we have Jen Johnson who has 10 years of service to the city of St. Helens. And then we have Shauna Duggan who has 10 years of service to the city of St. Helens. And we appreciate them very, very much and uh, uh, are, they're really inspirational in, in helping us grow and adjusting. And you know, there's just been a lot of changes throughout the city in the last four years that I've been here. And I'm sure Keith could tell us a lot more of the history of changes. But uh, and we continue to adapt and grow together. And we uh, thank you very much for your, your service. You know, go ahead.
Um, I just, these three um, young women are so important in our community. They do a fine job for the city, but they also do a fine job um, giving back to our community in other ways. And it's really great things happen in our community and almost always one of these fine women will be somewhere connected to it. And it just shows how much they care about our community, whether they're getting paid for it or not. They're always giving. And we just, I can't say thank you enough and how lucky we are to have such fine staff serving our community. Just thanks for all of that.
Totally agree.
Mayor, can I say just a couple of things?
Absolutely, Matt.
Um, I just want to also give a thanks to specifically Melanie. First off, because her work in municipal court department, especially these last couple of years, have we've gone through a lot of transition in that department. And she's taken on more of a leadership role in that department and getting the department back up to where it should be as far as standards. And I wanted to say thank you to Melanie for all of her hard work and dedication. And she is one of the, one of the um, very many people at the city that is always willing to come in and put in the extra time to get the job done and make sure that it's done right. So I wanted to thank Melanie for that. On Shauna, I, I don't know if I can do her any justice for the woman of the year of a couple of years ago award, as well as all of her hard work and dedication as she started in the utility billing office and then transitioned into the recreation program. And you guys have, have been a witness to some of that blossoming um, of her job and what she has meant to the community. And then Jennifer Johnson, I think, does not get enough credit for some of the work that, that she does in the finance department that is very much behind the scenes of everything that happens. But um, she is a vital part of the city and uh, working towards moving forward. So I want to thank Jennifer as well as Shauna for her time and effort and commitment to the city.
Excellent. Okay, other counselors? I just want to, again, uh, you know, thank you for highlighting what Jennifer does because uh, Jen Johnson, you know, she's tucked away up there in the office and uh, she does do a lot. I know that. And uh, obviously constantly working. Because um, and, and you know, again, what you said about Melanie with our courts, we all each and every council member knows the amount of effort you put in trying to um, get the backlog and it was just, there was a lot of stuff that was going on with our court system and you really stepped up. And uh, you know, again, Shauna is just a very bubbly personality that uh, we all love and uh, the community loves her as well. And uh, she is right fit for that position, so um, that's what I can say. All right.
Mayor?
One last chance. Okay, yep.
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to make certain that uh, that I give acknowledgement to Melanie and Shauna and, and Jen. And you know, they never get thanked, uh, especially from uh, the individuals that uh, are somewhat removed. The council is in, in a sense uh, kind of in a different uh, atmosphere. And so I just want to make certain that we, we thank them for all the things that they do. They, it's, it's uh, I, I think the mayor said it well. I think Matt said it well. Uh, all I just want to do is just uh, give them a, a big uh, kudos for an appreciation for what they, what they do on a day-to-day basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Okay. Well, let's move on to our next item on our agenda, which is to talk about Scappus Bay Watershed Council update. Dana Pritchard. Go ahead, turn it over to Dana.
Okay.
All right.
Here's screen. So can you all see my screen? Oh, there we go.
Yep, it's loading. There we go.
Okay. Can you all see the first slide there? And it looks like presentation. Okay.
We can.
Okay, well, I want to introduce myself. I'm Dana Pritchard. I'm the coordinator for the Scappus Bay Watershed Council. And I've been in this position for about a year. So this is the first time I'm meeting a lot of you and some of you have had the pleasure with um, at least meeting virtually with this year, um, if not in person. So today I'm going to give you a brief update that I call the state of the watershed. Kind of a summary of various uh, reports from some of our partners. And I'll talk a little bit about what the council's been working on and some of the projects we have coming up for this next year. I will ask for questions a couple of times, so if you have questions, know that there will be a chance to ask them. Okay, so the watershed council um, covers about 85,000 acres of land. It extends from St. Helens, includes Scappus and parts of Savvy Island and then the upland portions of that. So there's uh, six subwatersheds in our um, in the Scappus Bay watershed. The Milton Creek area, Scappus Creek, which includes north and south, uh, and the Gilbert River. And our mission is to restore habitat for wildlife, protect water quality, um, increase native plant species and diversity and then educate, advise, advise and assist landowners to improve the communities, creeks and natural areas. As I like to say, we um, keep track of the wildlife, the water and the weeds. So those are kind of our three areas of focus. So the first thing we're going to talk about is fish. Um, so this data is from Jim Brick with uh, Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. He is the lower Columbia implementation coordinator. And there are four uh, species of endangered salmon in our watershed that are covered by recovery plans. Two Coho salmon and winter steelhead are still present here in um, unfortunately quite low numbers. Uh, false Chinook salmon and chum salmon have been functionally extirpated, which means they haven't been seen in our area for um, enough time that they don't believe that they'll return without any um, stocking. So we'll talk a little bit about Coho salmon. Historically, we would have had about 22,000 Coho in streams in the Scappus Bay watershed.
Hey Dana, I'm sorry to interrupt. I want to make sure that we're on the same slide as you. We're still seeing the um, first slide.
Okay, bring your shared window to the front. How do I do that?
So I think when you hit start for the PowerPoint, it may have taken it to your secondary screen and we're still seeing the main screen.
Okay, how do I?
Thank you, Matt. I was wondering about that too.
Yeah, you might, I would suggest just, there you go. Yeah.
There we go.
Awesome. All right. Yep, now we're good.
Yes.
I'm kind of wondering how that works. Anyway, all right, here we go. So this is our Scappus Bay watershed. You can see the map now with the five um, watersheds listed there and kind of our missions. So there's that slide. Uh, so these are our fish status. You can see in the map there uh, where they used to be uh, present and the four species there. And here we are on Coho salmon. So everyone still with me?
Yep.
Awesome. Okay, so historically we would have had about 22,000 Coho in our area. To get uh, them off the endangered species list for our area, we need to have about 3,000 uh, salmon returning to our streams annually. Um, currently you can see the green line on the graph there is what has been observed in our streams. And in 2018 and 19, we had about 250 individuals to less than 100 in some of those years. So unfortunately, it has not been an upward trend. And we're not very close to our goal of 3,000 fish. Uh, so that's kind of where we're at on that. Uh, steelhead historically would have had about 12,000 in our streams and we need again about 3,000 regularly returning to get them off of the endangered species. Regularly returning to get them off of the endangered species list for our area. And there has not been as much um. Surveying done for steelhead and I'm not entirely sure why. That would be a question for Jim and something I'll follow up with him on. But as you can see, we've had no sightings of winter steelhead in our streams. Um, this last year in twenty nineteen and. Very few the years before. So if anybody is seeing these fish, we always want to know. Um, you can send us photos, you can send video, you can just shoot me an email and let me know if you're seeing fish in your streams. Um, and I pass that information on to Jim and Dave and they can come out and take a look. Um, and they do do regular, regular stream surveys as well. But it's not, not the direction we would like to see it heading. We'll get back to fish, but now we're gonna talk a little bit about water quality. So this is from the DEQ's um water quality report for our area. So they've been monitoring our streams since about twenty sixteen. It's not very long in water quality standards, so we definitely want to get more data for more years before we. Make any drastic decisions, but. Um, good news is we are currently meeting goals for dissolved oxygen and pH. Dissolved oxygen is necessary for fish and other wildlife to live in those streams and it generally gets lower as the temperature goes up. Um, and pH is just how acidic or basic the water is, so we want it to be neutral at seven. Um, unfortunately, we are not meeting goals for E. coli, which comes from manure or. Poop generally, either from humans or animals. Um, it's a bacteria that's found in the water. And Scappus Creek, so this, this map on the left here on the bottom, you can see that the orange areas are the streams that are not meeting those goals, so. Basically, all the Milton Creek watershed into St. Helens and then the Scappus Creek, which goes from Scappus, kinda the. The stream, the riverside of Highway thirty uh into the bay. Has elevated E. coli levels for at least part of the year. And then the, the map on the right here is summer water temperatures and you can see that none of our streams are meeting. The goals for summer water temperatures in any of our streams. Um, and unfortunately, that doesn't seem to be something that's going to be. Improving anytime soon unless we get some shade on those streams and cooler water. Coming into those, those stream areas, so. Those are kinda the areas we need to work on a little bit. Get some more information on. So next, um, we're gonna talk about weeds. So we are part of the North Coast Cooperative Weed Management Area and that covers. Basically from us all the way to over to Astoria and then and then down the coast. So we partner with all those folks to. Track weeds and work on controlling them in our area and that um. Columbia Soil and Water Conservation District is the primary partner that does the weed program in our area. So this last year. They've treated garlic mustard, yellow archangel, knotweed, yellow flag iris, just a little bit and a little bit of spotted knapweed. And spurge laurel. So garlic mustard has really been a big focus. Uh, this past year, they did get a. Grants uh for garlic mustard treatment along Scappus Creek from the Oregon State Weed Board, so that's why a lot of that um treatment was done. And then this last year, we partnered with them to get another grant from. OWEB, the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board, um to remove English holly from a five acre. Former Holly Tree Farm. And that removal has already started this year, so that's kind of our weeds. Update on what's going on there. What else can we do? Um, so one of the big ways that weeds spread are through seeds um and through. Po- portions of the weed plant that get carried on things like vehicle tires or people's. Feet when they're out walking. So one big thing we could do, or the council could do as a city, is to make sure that. Any equipment that the city staff is using when they're out treating or driving through. Areas with weeds is that they're cleaning them off before they go to another area. Also, having an uh licensed herbicide applicator on staff. Always helpful, so you can spot treat any weeds on public lands, in public parks and such. Um, within the city, city staff program. Um, if you guys, do you guys have a licensed applicator on staff? I don't know.
Well, we, we are currently in the process of getting, we have one, he just retired.
Gotcha. Okay. Great. Um, and that's something, obviously, I haven't had a chance really to work with many of you on some of these things, so if. You guys want some help or need help on weed ID, um weed surveys, weed control on any of your public lands. That's something that we are happy to partner with you on. We have also a licensed um. Herbicide applicator just starting on staff here, so um happy to help partner with you guys on that to make sure that we're on top of it.
I have a question about the, the garlic mustard. Is that the, is that weed? Does it almost engulf the uh? The waterway? I mean, it seems like if it's the same stuff I'm thinking of. It'll start about twenty to thirty feet away from the stream and just i- is all the way up to the edge of the water into the water. Is that? Is that that stuff?
Um, I'm gonna have Emily answer that. Fly right in here.
Hi.
Hi Emily. So my question was, wa- was the, the garlic mustard, is that stuff, does it start. A ways away from the stream and then just work its way right up to the edge of the water and sometimes over the edge of the water?
So it definitely can. It seems to be more of a plant that frequents the upland areas, which is one of the reasons why you'll see it in like hillsides and forested areas. And one of the reasons why you find it along areas like Scappus Creek is because you have that combination of. Upland open areas, it can work its way up to the water's edge, but the real problem is that. It releases a chemical into the soil that actually alters the composition so that it's more favorable for garlic mustard. And other plants have a harder time coming back from it.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a nasty one. Okay, so that picture on my slide that's in the bottom left there is gar- garlic mustard, so I'm not sure if that's the one you're thinking of. Um, knotweed is also a really nasty one along streams that has a similar chemical. Characteristic where it, it exudes things into the soil to keep other things away. Very nasty. So um, we definitely wanna make sure that these things are not getting a foothold in our county, cuz they can have a lot of economic impact on. Farms and just landowners that are trying to control them and also on the water quality of our waterways and. Our fish and wildlife habitat, so. The last thing I would encourage all of you to do is if you have any opportunity to talk with any of our state officials. Um, the weed board program lost its funding when the COVID um. Budget cuts occurred and so. Any encouragement from anyone to continue those grants will help us get more money in the county to keep controlling these things. Okay, so moving forward, based on these things, what can we do as a council, both the watershed council and a city council? To work on some of these issues. So we're gonna focus attention on treating the limiting factors that are affecting Coho and steelhead. Fortunately, in two thousand and twelve, the council did a limiting factor analysis for each of our streams. That laid out for each stream section what needed to be done to improve salmon habitat, so. We're going through that and really trying to get um, get those factors addressed to hopefully see some increases in population. I will also say with salmon, that a lot of what seems to be affecting them is not. Things in our, in their spawning grounds, it's things that are happening to them once they're out in the ocean, which we have. I mean, not really a whole lot of control over at a local level, so. Don't lose hope. The things we are doing here to create habitat are helping. Um, there's just some things that are out of our control that are also affecting these populations, so. Um, we're gonna be working with partners to prioritize and implement multi-agency restoration projects and I'm gonna talk to you guys about. One that we're working on with the city of St. Helens at the end of the presentation. Expanding our noxious weed surveying and control efforts on both public and private lands. So we don't have a county weed board. Um, my understanding is there used to be one in Columbia County. In some other counties, they're run by the conservation district. Sometimes they're an independent board, but getting a more uh. Cohesive weed control group together would, would be hu- might be helpful. And then we wanna continue to offer educational opportunities for all of our. Um, for all age groups and all the people who live in our watershed, so that they know what they can be doing for watershed health and the issues that we're facing. To do all of this, we are launching a Shade Our Streams program this next year. This is a program that has been. Um, piloted in a couple other watersheds and with great success. And with various funding levels, so this program offers free. Um, streamside clearing of weeds and then planting with trees for any landowner in. The project area, which would be our watershed. Um, so it's a great program cuz it's free for the landowners. You get the weeds taken care of, you get things planted on your, on your stream bank. It's great for water quality. Because it shades the streams and also creates that buffer. For things flowing into the stream and um helps get rid of weeds. So it's a win-win-win and also comes with an education program, so we'd like to offer. Educational workshops for landowners on stream issues as part of the program. So we're hoping to launch that in this next year. We're hoping to work with partners like the city and the conservation district and some of our other partners to get that off the ground. And to get funding for it, so. I will stay tuned. We'll be back with more info on that program, but that's how we're hoping to implement some of these goals. So I'm gonna take a quick break there and if you guys have questions on any of that, before I move into what we did this last year, I'll take a little.
I have one question.
Yes.
On cleaning up the streams, mainly the E. coli. Uh, there's been some work on freshwater clams. Do they help clean up E. coli?
I don't know. I have not seen that. So you're thinking that they help filter the E. coli?
They do help filter. The question is, do they get E. coli? I know the state and some of the tribes have some. Test areas. I just wondered if, we're not doing any of that here then.
Not that I know of, no.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, on the introducing of fish, or are you relying on what is considered a native species to make the comeback? Or are we talking about a reintroduction of the steelhead?
Right, there's no plans right now to reintroduce any fish in our area. There were some hatchery releases starting in nineteen ninety-seven. That were done in our area, but they, you know, hatchery fish and wild fish are not the same. They're not the same animal. They don't behave the same way in the wild and. You know, everything that ODFW has. Done. Um, just hasn't had a lot of success in getting the wild population to return if there are hatchery fish there, so. Unfortunately, there's really no plans to. Reintroduce anything of those, those two species at this point. We're just. Hoping that if we build it, build good habitat, they will start returning from the wild on their own. If maybe their. Their regular spawning gra- grounds aren't there anymore, maybe we'll get some that wander on up our streams and start. Recolonizing the area. I think that's the best hope we have for the extirpated species.
Mayor, Councilman Morton here to make a uh comment.
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep, uh, this, this, this is a, I just want to relate a report. Of uh steelhead that are apparently spawning in uh North McNulty Creek. That's uh, that's along Furlough uh in Furlough Park. And that uh, that stream runs through, I think, the origination of the North Fork. Uh, originates in Asbury Acres, uh follows a canyon uh down through uh Furlough Park and then. Uh, combines with uh McNulty Creek. Now, as, as a, as a kid, as a child, uh, that's, that was kind of the norm. And as far as getting all the way up to Furlough Park and up to Columbia Boulevard. Uh, as Columbia Boulevard and uh uh Gable Road combine and going through that culvert in there. I don't think anything has been seen there, but they have just been spotted in uh, in, in Furlough Park and I just. Uh, where, where the uh, uh, and that, that's so encouraging to me that, yeah, they are. There, there are native species coming back to that area and I just think that that's amazing. Um, I, I know that up, clear up on Morton Drive. Uh, off of Bachelor Flat Road, there was a draw there and my uh, and I didn't see this because I had not been born yet. And my uncle used to trap uh fish in that, in that draw as it goes across the. Uh, Morton Drive. Uh, and that's, you'd go in with pitchforks and, and uh, and uh, that's how, he was the guy who would. Bring in the fish uh this time of year and it was uh, I, I just thought that was interesting. He would trap them by putting willow sticks. Across that string and then wade in and do it. And this was way back in, you know, the early nineteen hundreds. And so that's uh, just a bit of history, but they're returning and I've uh. Annie Christensen spotted one and I just thought, wow, this is great news. So I just wanted to uh get that out and there's, there's not a lost hope in doing this. It's a matter of total recovery that's so exciting to me.
Yeah. Yeah, that's.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. And she did send us a video of that, so that's pretty exciting to see them coming up.
Oh, she's seen it. Okay, so yes, it is. I'm sorry.
No, no. I'm glad you brought it up and we're working on getting that up on our Facebook page so more people can take a, take a look at it, but um. But no, it's great and talking to Jim and Dave, they have seen a really good um. A good salmon run this year, this, this fall, so we're hopeful that. When I report to you next year, you'll see it, it heading up. So it, it does take about seven years for them. They go out to this ocean for. Seven years or so and then they come back in, so there is a lot of. Kind of lag time that we would, before we see some of those, those population changes, so. There's definitely hope. While the graphs look dire, there's definitely hope.
Well, uh, so I'll just speak a little bit from my history cuz I grew up fishing these creeks all and the steelhead used to be populated at Milton Creek. And it is decimated, it is completely gone. There was a salmon run coming up of it. But um, and I think that was due to those hatcheries or the hatchery boxes. I know Parnell's had one up on their property. Um, and you know, and I know ODFW is. Um, um, they're not. Considered a wild fish um when they're hatchery stock, but there's new evidence showing that if you lower the temperature in the nurseries. Where, that they take on a genetic code of a. A wild fish, a hatchery fish, and that is by lowering the temperatures. Um, but I'll tell you, from my experience, is a sea lion does not know the difference between a native. And a, in a hatchery and there lies the issue. Those eat more than the sa- the, the. The um gill netters, commercial guys and the recreational guys alone. They, they. Eat twice as many as were allocated. So that being said. I think we need to be stocking more creeks that used to have fish, that don't have fish anymore and enhancing their runs. That's just me personally and a lot of other fishermen personally and. Also, when you get the states out of it and you go to somebody like Gee Loomis, who actually does research and even went as far as taking salmon carcasses. After he squirted the eggs out of them, putting them upstream, so the crawdads could eat the carcasses, which in, in return. Fed the little tiny fish because the crawdads chew up these fish instead of just disposing them. He went really far and his returns of Coho were off. The charts. As a matter of fact, we were not able to fish this section of the Columbia River in the fall. For about four years because he asked Washington State and Oregon State to close this little section. Um, in, here in St. Helens for the Lewis Run. And his numbers were off the chart. Were way better than theirs.
Um, we did do some of the salmon carcass uh spreading. Uh, I think it was last year. We haven't done any this year. But it is something where we have done a couple of the creeks. To try to get that nutrient cycling back in, cuz it is, I mean, it used to be, you had twenty-two thousand fish. Dying in the up, upstream parts of the watershed. It was a significant nutrient input for other animals and as well as plants, so.
So it is against the law.
Doing more of that.
It is against the law for me to claim my fish and then after I'm done with that remains to. Put it back in that same stream, it's against the law.
Yeah, it's kinda interesting.
Yeah, it is. It is Oregon State law. You cannot return a carcass into uh any waterway.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, it's something we're continuing to work with them on and uh, keep your input in comments and uh, you know.
I'm a diehard fisherman, so you kinda, yes.
Mayor, I wanna say one more thing.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, the uh, uh, I press, this is for all the newcomers in our city, our. Okay, the, I first, this is for all the newcomers in our city, our citizens who look at our gateway sculptures as it crosses McNulty Creek and wonder what that's all about. Well, that's, that, those images, those bronze images celebrate exactly what you're talking about, the life cycle of salmon in our creeks. And that's what that's, that's what those two images in the, across the McNulty Creek celebrate. As well as the two images, the two icons that, that are located on Milton Creek celebrate the heritage of the salmon running up that river. So anyway, I just thought I'd bring that up for new, for any individuals who are wondering exactly what those symbols mean. There is some reader boards across the street because they are on a, on a highway. It's not safe to get out and have a reader board right on the highway, but there are some reader boards that explain the meaning and the work that went behind that. And the Arts and Cultural Commission worked very, very diligently in bringing that to our community.
A technical question.
Yes.
A technical question on throwing dead fish by the stream, mainly salmon. I can throw the same amount of protein, but is it helpful from an enzyme or a chemical point of view that the chemistry of the dead fish excite or bring fish back up into that stream as compared to just a protein load of dead animals?
Yeah, I, you know, I don't know all the answers to this. It's kind of a, a new idea for our watershed. So I'm not sure, but I, I think it probably is pretty salmon specific. Like if we just threw a bunch of dead cows out there, I don't think that would do the trick. That's kind of what you're thinking. You guys on this because, you know, as the numbers showed, what, whatever is currently kind of happening isn't isn't showing the trend that we want it to be showing. So we're trying to come up with some new ideas based on science, based on things that we can get funding for, for the most part. I mean, I would love to try a lot of different things. And I know ODF would as well. Dave Stewart is always up for trying, trying new things. A lot of, a lot of the things that we're limited by are just how much funding we can get to do these kinds of things. So I am open to any and all suggestions of ideas you guys have or things you've read and ways that we can, we can work together to get, to get fish coming back into the streams for, for all of us to enjoy, whether we're fishermen or just like seeing them in the backyard and all the other animals they support as well. So.
Hey, Dana. And you can just drop this down and I'll get off the fishing subject after this. Okay. But there's also a really good run of Sea Run Cutthroat Trout that you did not discuss that I think needs to be addressed for both those creeks. There are Sea Run. And I'm just curious of how they are as far as, they used to be abundant. And even, even after the steelhead went away, they were still there pretty abundant. I'm just curious on if you could find out some information on the Sea Run Cutthroat Trout. They come up, they come up twice a year.
Cool. Yeah, I'll definitely look into it.
I had a, just a comment. I don't know if you routinely work with our Parks Department because we have so much creek that is going through city property that we have, you know, kind of a strategy. Because I have worked with you guys a few times on doing plantings at Scappus Bay Marina and caring for some staff just as volunteers, unrelated to the city, just doing it because that's what I do. But just to make those strategies public, because I, I see in other communities, I see in Portland and Hillsborough and Forest Grove that they have a more woven strategy. So more citizens know, more municipalities know, more entities know that what is a bad plant, what is a good plant? And they kind of like, for example, right now with the school district is doing kind of a semi fundraiser.
Yeah.
I can't remember about trees right now and they're giving away trees. Well, people don't realize, do I live on the creek? Should I be getting these trees? And they're free and this is a good idea. And I just don't think that message is getting out there to all the municipalities, to all the the schools that maybe have wetlands, to different things because the fish are all well and good, but it's, it's a long road to fish on your plate.
Yes, I agree.
Long, long road. And it's like, it's got to start with, you know, safe farming practices, safe watering, irrigation practices, timber industry practices, all of those things, you know, the water goes downhill. And if like, you can't fix it in McCormick Park and expect fish to be popping up there next year if you haven't done the back work.
Yeah.
I just, I just think that not enough people know what the strategy is. And, you know, whether there's a National Audubon or whether there's Nature's Conservancy that have a better mechanism for getting the word out there. Whether there's announcements or something that the city could partner with. Like we have a pretty sustained group that do solve cleanups in this community at Dalton Lake and down on the waterfront. And it's like people knew, and if we were on that radar because we have the same issues that they have in all the counties around us, we just don't communicate that to our public. So it's just that communication piece. And I realize you've only been there a year. And this is my last meeting of eight years, but going forward, it would be, you know, the communication is key. As, as I'm out in the community, people are like, I didn't even know this entity existed.
Right.
And you guys are the plant sale people, aren't you?
We are. We're going to talk about that right next.
Okay. The what, what fish are to the mayor, plants are to me.
Yes. For everybody over here.
Jenny, one more thing. The soils commission that we have on Millard Road does a phenomenal job of working through just what was, what you suggested. And it would be a good thing for the city to start to partner with them as a, as a, an outreach. I'm sure the watershed people do. You, I'm sure you have some of those people on that, on that soils board that are on the watershed. I would think. No?
Yeah.
Well, it'd be a good thing to partner with that group anyways. Federal group and they do a great, they put out a calendar of all the species of plants that.
Conservation District, Soil and Water Conservation District.
That's right.
Yes, yes. No, yes, we are definitely partnering with them for sure.
Okay, good.
So yeah, thanks. Um, so I am hoping that the Shade Our Streams program can start to be a way to get some more of that education component out to everyone about the things that they can be doing on their streams. And there is a four-part workshop series that would be open to folks that include all the things you're talking about, Jenny. So, so plants and what's in our streams and just all kinds of different things. Including naturescaping your own yard, just all those things that we're hoping to really get out into the community with a little broader access. Again, I think one of the big things for us is that, you know, we are grant funded a hundred percent. We don't get taxpayer money. We don't get any of that. So everything that we're doing is dependent on us either partnering with the city or another partner to deliver that or getting funding from them or finding a grant to, to help us get this stuff up and off the ground. There are a lot of other councils and conservation districts that have programs like this. So we don't need to reinvent the wheel. We just need to do some outreach and organizing to get it in our county. So I'm happy to hear you say that you would be happy to see that here because that's kind of what we're moving towards doing more of. So. All right. So I'm going to move on and talk a little bit about what we did this last year specifically. And if you guys have more questions, there'll be some time at the end again. So the native plant nursery, as Jenny mentioned, is one of our biggest projects and one of the biggest things that we do. We have our nursery located at the Scappus High School. We also have started this year partnering with the Columbia River Youth Corps at their nursery site in out by the fairgrounds. If you're familiar with them, they're part of the St. Helens School District. Unfortunately with COVID, obviously the kids aren't in school. So we've partnership has been a little slow to get off the ground this year. So this year we supplied over four thousand plants for restoration projects. We are almost completely volunteer run at our nursery. We do have one staff member that oversees volunteers and kind of coordinates the efforts, but the majority of the work on caring for plants is done by volunteers. We, they meet one day a week on Thursday mornings to do that. Normally we have over two thousand volunteer hours per year. This year, about two hundred and fifty, three hundred or so. So it's been a pretty lean year. Losing those student volunteers and also our master gardener program and just not able to have people for several months of the year is really cut into our program. So that, that's meant me the staff person that was remaining during the worst of the shutdown was taking care of the plants and keeping the council running. So it was, it was a tough year. We did raise about nine thousand dollars at our fall plant sale that we were able to have this last fall. Normally we do about fifteen thousand to twenty thousand between two annual events. We have a spring and a fall plant sale. And we had to cancel our spring sale this year. So recovered a little bit, but we're still quite a bit behind on our fundraising. And overall, we, we're down about fifteen thousand in income just for the nursery operations due to the impacts from COVID. So we not only sell plants at the plant sales, but we also sell to a lot of our partners when they're doing restoration projects. And a lot of those projects were put on hold this year. So that reduced our sales. So that's been a, been a bummer, but we're, we're up and running now and hoping to welcome volunteers back real soon. So the other thing that we do a lot of is restoration projects. So this year, we, we ourselves planted about two thousand six hundred and forty plants in our restoration projects, the rest went to partners. We did a big stream channel restoration on North Scappus Creek and another project on Milton Creek. And that was about six acres and over a third of mile of stream that restoration activities were completed on. We put in nine large wood structures, which is the picture you can see on the left there is an example of a large wood structure. Those are engineered. They're all designed to where they're placed and how big they are and where the root wads are and all that stuff is all engineered. And then those logs are buried into the bank and secured by. Sorry. So they're secured by pins and boulders and they help protect banks and change the stream channel flow as well as providing habitat for fishes. So we got a lot of that done. And then we did two restoration designs. So before we do the construction, we have to get a grant to do the design work. So we did the design work for Reach F, which is in Veterans Park and Scappus and also on Raymond Creek, which is also in Scappus. So we'll be working on the construction phase of those next year. We did do a little bit of outreach this year. So like I said, we got a little bit of volunteer work done. We did have a couple of events. We did our one plant sale. And then we shifted gears a bit and we did some volunteer workdays in local parks and natural areas, cleaning up, getting weeds out, all those things. And then we did an aquatic weed workshop kayak tour socially distanced. That was, that was really fun. And we're hoping to do more of that in the future as well. And then another big part of our outreach was we distributed the Living on the Water Guide. That's something we developed in partnership with the West Maltoma Conservation District because they cover the Savvy Island portion of our watershed. It's a guide that we have been giving out to anyone with a houseboat or you know, living on a sailboat, those kinds of things, to all those communities that just has tons of information about everything from having a fire safe marina to invasive weeds that they might deal with. So that's been a really great outreach effort. And we're working with those communities now to do projects in their marina and, and other things with them. So that's been kind of our outreach this year. We were able to get some new grants and partnerships worked out in this year of being at home. One of the things that I'm hoping maybe we could work on with the City of St. Helens is with the City of Scappus, we did an IGA with them where we are going to be maintaining and improving and coming up with management plans for all their natural areas in their parks and water and watershed properties. So as Jenny was mentioning, you guys do have a lot of parks and public space that have streams in them. And you know, what are the plans for managing them? Do you do regular weed surveys? Do you have staff that can do them? If you don't, you know, we have staff that can do that. And so we can partner together to help you guys manage those more efficiently. We can also organize volunteer days to get some of the work done, get grants to help you do things in those parks. So that's what, what we're, what we did was the City of Scappus. And we're open to doing that with City of St. Helens as well, if you're interested.
I had a question. I've seen other communities do like backyard habitat programs. And we don't have that bandwidth to come up with that stuff, but it would be cool to put that out either through other channels or through our rec department because that would be a perfect COVID socially distant thing that families could do to, you know, create their own little habitat and have people realize good plant, bad plant, good bird, bad bird kind of thing. And know that what you feed the, what kind of bird food you put out, phosphorus, good habitat, all those kinds of things. And that would be a cool, you know, we're going into the birding time of year. I'm, that's kind of my deal, plants and birds. But it's like, it's kind of that time of year to really get excited about, you know, shelter and water and foraging and all that kind of stuff. And where the kids aren't in the classroom, this is a real hands-on opportunity for our families. And with Shawna and her rec team, small that it is, the community, families in our community are hungry for this content. And I just thought where we have a vehicle to get it out, I just thought that going forward obviously won't be me because this is my last meeting, but that would, it's been kind of a pet project in the back of my mind for a number of years of how we could do that.
We do have some open spaces on our watershed.
Yeah, we just, we just, we just have a couple of different nature areas, the Nob Hill Nature Park and Dalton Lake. And we have a lot of really dedicated tireless volunteers in our community that are just dedicated to doing the right thing and just those partnerships. And I don't remember her name, but she gave us plants, native plants to plant down at the waterfront here. Every year we've done the waterfront cleanup. She's like, here, she goes, I don't want any petunias. Here's some native plants. So I just appreciate all the work you guys are doing.
Cool. Well, thank you for that. And you must be reading my mind because getting the backyard habitat program and kind of like backyard habitat certification programs for both our more urban landowners and also sort of the small acreage, non-farmer landowners that we have a lot of is something we are also working on this year. So hopefully we'll see that in the very near future. And I was not joking about that vacancy on the board. So think about it. For any of you on the council board that would like to join, we are, we would love to have more participation from our cities and county on our board. On that note, we also got some project grants from the Watershed Enhancement Board. That's where we get most of our grant funding from. So we got two hundred and sixty-four thousand for Brush Creek. That will install large wood. Like I showed you in the previous slide on portions of Milton Creek. And then we, Raymond Creek, we got that design and outreach and survey grant that's in the works. So we're doing survey work and design on that. And it's pretty cool. And then we got a fifteen thousand dollar grant to help work on Nob Hill. So I'm going to talk to you guys a little bit more about exactly what's involved in the Nob Hill Grant because that's in the City of St. Helens. So, let's see, this was a project that Carolyn Skinner from the Friends of Nob Hill came to us with. And the new, and also Jenny Dimshaw has been working with me on this one. So the new boardwalk that was installed that links Nob Hill with Fifth Street has a lot of blackberries and ivy and some nasty stuff on there. So we all got together and we decided we should focus on that area, improving it like everyone has done in the rest of the park. So we got a grant together. The total project will be about eighteen thousand dollars. And OWEB gave us about twelve thousand dollars to get that off the ground. And then we have matching funds from the City of St. Helens, Friends of Nob Hill, and also from our nursery to get, to get that project going. So we want to really involve the community in this project. So encouraging volunteers to come help us with planting. And then also training the Friends of Nob Hill volunteers and stewards with how to maintain after things have been planted to keep those weeds at bay and identify any problem weeds that might be in there. The goal of it is really to restore that oak woodland habitat. The goal of it is really to restore that oak woodland habitat that's present in the park. It's a pretty unique habitat type in our area. So it's that open sort of understory with the oak overstory. So that's kind of what we're going for. A lot of blackberry, a lot of ivy. We're going to be replanting and removing, removing all the bad stuff and putting in good stuff. And kind of the timeline for that is this winter, we're going to be kind of cleaning it up, making sure that it's safe for people to work in, for the crews to work in. So there's some trees that have come down that we need to, to get out of there and then marking property boundaries. So we know that we're working on the, the right place. And then we'll get contractors in there to clear out the blackberries in this early springtime. And then as they start to regrow in the fall, there'll be a spot treatment, chemical treatment of the blackberries to, to kill them. And then we should be able to plant next winter, January, February. And some in November as well at the Nob Hill work party. So really excited to work with everybody on that project. Do you guys have any questions about that project? Because that is pretty much the end of my presentation.
I just asked, what do you use for the spot treatment? After you've cut it and it regrows?
So that is something we're still, once we get the plan together, we'll have a specific chemical. Are you asking like what herbicide we're using? Yeah. So we don't have the exact chemical plan up and running yet. We're meeting with city and then some of the contractors and whatnot to go over that. We'll be developing that in the next month or so.
Sure. Cause Aqua Master, which is basically a water safe roundup, I don't think would work on blackberries. Personally, I don't think that would. Just a little bit stronger.
We'll, we'll keep you guys abreast of the developments on that project. Once we get the more specific recommendations and plan in place. But right now we're still kind of sharing with everyone to.
I think if you found out, you know, what you were going to use, it'd be, I'd like to know because, you know, people ask me and people are unaware that Aqua Master is actually more water safe than Roundup. If you are around a butter, body of water to use Aqua Master, it's kind of the same idea as Roundup, but not as in, as in invasive to the waterway.
Yeah, we'll definitely do notification of what is sprayed and, and, and all of that when we get closer to actually treating it. As an update. And then also obviously before we spray anything, we'll both update you all as a council and then also put signs out at the park so that people know what's going on. And hopefully we will also continue to do some press releases and things like that to update the public on what we're doing down there. And so hopefully everyone will be in the know who wants to be.
All right, Dana, unless there's any other questions for Dana. All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you all for having me. And yeah, I look forward to talking with you and working in the future, with you in the future.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is discussion regarding urban trail. Council President Morton and I'm going to turn it over to Parks and Trails Commission Chair Carmen Dunn, actually probably. But, how far, what did?
Yeah, I, I'd certainly want to introduce Carmen to our citizenry. If you haven't heard from Carmen, she's the chairman of our, our Parks Commission. And she's done such an outstanding job. And this, this, what she's going to present is going to be a precursor to our resolution that we'll hopefully look at and discuss and adopt tonight. And that's a resolution of the council to honor citizen engagement and promote community health and livability. Carmen and staff have worked diligently to make this urban trail concept go. And I think you'll be excited to to hear what she has to say. One other thing is, is that I just want to thank Dana for her outstanding presentation and giving reference to the Friends of Parks and Carmen and that Parks Commission looked at the Friends of concept some time ago. And now we're reaping the rewards of what the Friends are doing by obtaining grants to pay for these kinds of maintenance issues. I just think, I just, I feel really good about what our Parks Commission is doing. I can't thank them enough. And so with that, I want to introduce Carmen and she'll have a, a great presentation for us. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you. So I am going to share my screen here in just a second for this presentation.
Matt, can you hear me?
Who is this? Who's trying to come in?
Is that Jerry?
Yeah.
Hi Jerry. So just as a little precursor, we kind of revamped a presentation that we gave to the city council over a year ago. I always lose track of time. So it may have been a year, it may have been almost two years ago. It's all kind of a blur these days. But we, we built off of a presentation that we did about having an urban trail in St. Helens. And the Parks Commission has had, Parks and Trails Commission has had a lot of energy about this back when we first kind of got this underway and put together the presentation and recommendation. And it just continues to come up. And so we wanted to revamp it. There, this isn't all from me. This is Jerry, Howard, Alissa. We've had a lot of help from Rachel and Doug. So this is a, a group effort. But we wanted to kind of present to you our ideas. So I will get the slideshow started, assuming you all can see my screen.
We can.
Okay, great. Alrighty, so St. Helens Urban Trail Pathway. So what is it? This is a suggested route for residents and visitors to explore our city. So what we've mapped out is about two and a half miles in length. It's connecting about six of our parks. And it showcases scenic overlooks from both sides of the city and then passes various historical sites and connects local businesses. You can see a small version of the map over here on the right. There's kind of two loops to it. I don't want to go too much into detail on the path. You guys have seen it before. We've modified it a little bit, but I really want to focus on what we're recommending, what we want done and how to do that. So this is the overall what? Why do we want to have an urban trail or a pathway? There's quite a few reasons. So we've summed up, summed them up into having a livable community. So having opportunities for the community to have outdoor recreation and public education on our park offerings, what parks are out there, how to get from park A to park B. Economic development, the loop circulates through Old Town. It connects local shopping, restaurants, businesses and tourism. It can be related to the tourism activities and holiday festivities. Another option of things to do. Community engagement and partner opportunities. So there's the potential with this urban trail to be able to partner with the Columbia County Museum Association. There's the Lewis and Clark Trail Partnership and then Main Street, St. Helens. And one of the biggest things I think that, that has us continuing to bring this up is that artists, our citizens are really asking for this. We get, we get citizens coming for public comment to our meetings, which are held monthly. We get visitor comment about trails and connectivity in our city and between our parks, almost every single meeting. It also came up in the community survey. So because this continues to come up, we wanted to continue to bring this up and bring it back to you guys. So another piece of it is boosting awareness of our parks. So it does pass through some of our lesser known parks where there's less, less awareness. It highlights different aspects of our history, nature and culture. It hits Nob Hill Nature Park, Godfrey Park, River Connections at Great Cliffs and Columbia View. And then as we just heard just a minute ago from Dana about that Fifth Street pathway, it, it connects with that as well. So it'd highlight that new area and that new improvement in the city. So last time, we had a, a big list of things that we wanted and we kind of talked through a lot of that. This time, what we really want to focus on is what needs to happen. What's our prior, priority one requirements in order to get this urban trail or pathway kind of off the ground and really get this going? So finalizing the suggested route is first. We don't want to get too caught up on this. We really want to provide the plan to city staff, but let the staff collaborate and confirm the proposed route. So we want staff to be involved and really get behind this and feel that they, they can help with that as well and want to give them that flexibility. Improvements to Great Cliff Trail was a really big piece that was holding us back last time and I think was a barrier to us. That work is now complete and it's awesome. Huge thanks to all the staff in the city who helped make that happen. Evaluating the need or options for a safety barrier at the top of Great Cliff Trail. We talked about this a lot. We're not 100% sure that we need that safety barrier. But it definitely needs to be evaluated to see what the options are and if that's something that needs to be in place before we start sending people out on this trail. And then adding the, the, the trailer, the pathway to the website and to materials. So we have the park sites page up on the website. And then we also have an existing map of parks and trails on the website. So those would need to be updated for this new pathway, once the route is finalized. And then the last piece is installing signage. So just kind of directing people where to go to follow the path. This is the proposed route. Like I said, I don't want to get too caught up in the details of the route. You can see, see the loop, how it connects our different parks. Jerry has been really awesome at helping with the path and Howard too. I don't know all the street names as well as they do. They've been around this area forever and they have all that expertise. Huge thanks to Rachel for helping put together this map. If I click into it, I don't know if it's, it might not show you guys. Do you guys see it take you to Google Maps or is it still on the presentation?
No, I see the proposed route very clearly.
It's still on the presentation.
But it's still on the presentation. So in the actual, and I can send the link out to you guys, in the actual presentation, there is a, an actual link to bring this back up. There's a link that takes you to the Google map. And it shows the different loops of it. And so you can kind of play around with it and look at it that way. And I can go back to that later if you guys want. So we talked about the priority one improvements that would be needed. There are future enhancements that would be great. Added safety improvements. So crossings and sidewalks could be a future project as well as suggested pathways throughout the city for overall community safety. Benches overlooks, that's something that could be added over time as it's deemed important in specific areas. And we could consider these for future community donations. We get, we've had the Lions Club coming forward quite a bit to donate benches to us. And so this would be an area that we could suggest to add benches to those overlooks. Future pathways. So the great part about getting this first urban trail or urban pathway up is really to, to kind of get that first piece done, get that done so that we can start to connect to other areas. So future pathways to connect to additional business areas, parks and point of interest throughout the city as well as connecting to other local cities. We've had that come up quite a bit at Parks and Trails Commission meetings. And I think it's important that we continue to explore that. And then citywide trail opportunities for inclusion in the next Parks and Trails Master Plan. So that was kind of brief and quick to go through it. We didn't want to get too much into the details. So I wanted to give a, a chance for questions as, as Councilor Morton mentioned. There is, there is an item tonight at, let me stop sharing really quick. At tonight's city council meeting, there is an item in your packet. There's a resolution, a resolution to honor citizen engagement and promote community health and livability. So our ask of you guys would be that that passes and that we are able to work with city staff to really get this first urban trail and pathway off the ground and hit the ground running. So that is my presentation. I will let Jerry and Howard, if they have any additional comments or Rachel, if anyone wants to add to that, or if there's anything I missed, please do chime in.
Rachel, I mean Carmen, can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, I'd like for everyone to look at Keith Locke. Mr. Locke. One of the things, you know, we would like to have on this, this urban trail or two overlooks, you know, one of them would be a Nob Hill Nature Park and the other one would be there at the end of Wythe Street. And Keith's background there is, was, I would assume was taken from that location. That's what it looks like to me. It's one of the nicest public view areas in all of St. Helens. At our meeting on Monday, Kathy Surstadt came to the meeting. And, and she represents the Lions Club and she's donated some benches to the, to Dalton Creek Nature Preserve. But her and her husband approached me several weeks ago because they're avid walkers and they said, hey, we'd like to get a bench put up at the top of Wythe Street there. And I said, well, we've been talking about that in the Parks and Trails Commission for a long time. So I, I do think this trail would really help our community. And I think it would really give us more regional what I want to say, recognition. And I think we'd get people from Portland and all over the area coming and visiting our city because of the urban trail.
Definitely.
Just a comment, I'm so excited about this. As I travel around, I see a lot of other communities have this type of trail. But I'm not looking at it as a visitor thing. I'm looking at it as improving the livability for people that live in our community. To encourage our residents to get out and know their neighbors and take a walk in their neighborhood and meet people because it's the one thing of the COVID has reminded us how lucky we are that we have such a wonderful community with all these great parks. And we've, as a council, have invested so much in public spaces and it's really time to showcase it. And as people are getting older and the number one thing they can say to extend your life is to walk, I think that giving people places to walk and places to sit. Because as you get older, it's like, I can walk so far and then I have to sit. And it's like, if you provide places every three quarters of a mile for me to sit, I can get a long ways. But if there's no place to sit, I gotta walk to, you know, down to Columbia Boulevard and back and sit at my house. I'd much rather sit and look at that beautiful picture behind Keith's house. I've taken that picture on one of my walks, but there was no place to sit there except on the guardrail. So there's that. But I just appreciate all your effort and I appreciate the fact that you didn't give up and you keep pushing. Because, you know, we all know in government, that's how things get done is somebody keeps pushing. So thank you for that.
We'll keep pushing. So you guys might as well just pass the resolution and then we can move on and we can, we can help make it happen.
One thing that's not in the presentation is also Plaza Park, which I know that that's a county park, not a city park, but that's right there. And then also we have Sand Island that people are going to be passing by. And then in the summertime, if the, the current programs persist, then people would be able to catch a a shuttle to, to Sand Island. So, you know, there's, there's a lot to offer, as Jenny said, to people in the community and also for, for visitors. We have something unique. It's really unique. I think we have really a unique trail here. One of the neater ones in, I've walked hundreds and hundreds of trails. And I think this one would be really, really a wonderful addition to our city.
Does the council have any questions for us that we can help answer so that you can make an informed decision tonight?
Well, and I can appreciate Carmen and Jerry, especially Jerry, when he first proposed this. So it came up over Third Street and it was like, it was a nightmare. And now that it's coming down through Fifth, through the walking bridge, it seems a lot more clear. Also, you started to mention some about Keith and that the, the Wythe Street. I take care of some yards there. And it is very well walked. Some of the neighbors, you know, are concerned like Claire Jensen would be one. Some of the neighbors, um, you know, are concerned like Claire Jensen would be one. If you've met her, you know her, she's the little lady in the little blue house. She's always out front doing her gardening. But uh, and I talked to Counselor Locke about this is just some type of wire along that cliff just to make sure that people know not to go up to the edge because it's asphalt right below. And uh, I think that, I mean, people are smart enough, but it just would be something there to say, you know, don't go beyond that point. And even if it was just a couple of pylons into the rock with a cable going through, just something. But uh, yeah, good work as far as reconfiguring the trail too as well. And I like the idea of uh, that, you know, you have two eateries on that. But I mean, all downtown, if you wanted to go gift shopping, could be on that little app.
Yeah, and the great, the great part about it is we can, and we we did this at in our subcommittee meetings. There's so many different routes that you can kind of take off of it. You know, if you need to shorten it, you go this way. And so there's so many options for that. We didn't want to go into that in too much detail because we could talk about it for hours. But there is a lot of that. And that's how, that's why we wanted to kind of mention that flexibility to have different routes and really build off of, we get this first one done, get this first piece done, kind of set the standard. And then from there we can build and it'll be a lot easier.
Yeah, and uh, Lucy and I, I just will say this one last thing is uh, Lucy and the hour to hour and a half that I'm up there on Fridays, I will see probably thirty people pass in going down that Great Cliffs Trail. So um, yes, very, yep.
Jerry, did you have something else?
Oh, I I, well, one of the, you know, I know we don't want to get into details here. But you, one of the things we talked about originally promoting was, you know, we'd have a kiosk at each park so people could see where the trail was going. But we'd also have a pre uh kiosk, you know, down by the river that would have a map of that area. So if people wanted to walk up to, say, and um buy, you know, alcohol, they could see that they could walk up there. Or there could be a map of downtown where people could see where the restaurants were located. And there's also a a dog park that's on this right off of this in Great Cliffs Park. So all this would be on a kiosk so that when people look at it, they could say, hey, we can go eat here. We can use this business, we can take our dog there, etc. So uh, you know, anyway, I'll just leave it at that. We go on and on and on. I'm pretty fired up about this, as you guys know.
That's the plus side too, though, that that we're all pretty invested in this. And so we're happy to do as much work as we need to, to partner with city staff to make it easier on staff. We know staff has limited time, but whatever we can do to help to make this happen, the Parks and Trails Commission is on board and willing to help, so.
I gotta chime in too real quick and just say, you know, we have a lot of people from the voters down there and stuff that come into our area and they're looking for places to walk. And so if we give them the general idea of where to go, you know, this could be really good. I run into people all the time in Nob Hill and other places that are just not even from this area that are just looking for ways to walk. And the other one, um, I'm just gonna bring up real quick is that we can always just stencil little arrows and stuff on the sidewalks or or not sidewalks or the streets on to to get people around. It isn't a lot of signage at house to go up right away to make this work. So to just take a few stencils and a little paint to get people to know where to go to. So I hope you do think on that tonight. And that's it.
Yeah, I would just say for the entire council that I know we all really like this idea right from the get go. It was just the old route had a few um, the caution to the wind from staff. And we're like, what? And it was like, whoa, okay, hold on just a minute. But this new route looks much better, much, much easier to probably work with. So I, yeah.
And uh, the other thing, Rick, on this, if, you know, let's say the Fifth Street Trail gets continued down to St. Helen's Street. You know, that could be added on. And I see that happening if we ever get a grant for that. So, you know, it could be modified later on.
Good point. Okay, any other questions for the Parks and Trails Commission people? We got them all here. Pretty much about half you guys, right?
Mayor, you know why I'm, you know why I'm so excited about being on the Parks Commission? These are great people, they do great work. And we're going to have a wonderful outcome uh if we adopt this resolution.
Thank you, and thank you for all of your support. Thank you Doug for your support too and getting us kind of jumping back into this and Jerry and Howard and everybody. You know, it's it's really been a team effort to get to this point. And Rachel has been a huge help as well recently. So just thanks to everybody who's contributed. We really appreciate it.
Well, thank you guys and your continued persistence and determination to push this trail, okay?
Yes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Carmen. Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, Howard. Thank you, Doug. All right, um, let's go on to our next item for the agenda is discussion regarding renewal of Dropbox franchise. John.
So thank you, Mary. I this should be a fairly short uh, short item. I just wanted to check in on the status of our renewal of Dropbox Franchise Waste Management. We do have Dean Camper on the line to to talk about things if necessary. But uh, you'll notice that there's nothing in your packet and that's because there the information that we've requested going back and forth just came, I just received it and wasn't in time for press for the meeting. So generally, the it's a renewal of a ten year agreement. So it's something we want to, you know, slow down, think about these things last for ten years. And the things that Waste Management has requested are fairly fairly workable items. They're looking at a continuing a the the Consumer Price Index, the Inflationary Index that it's tied to rather than the one that they're currently using. They want to use one that's more industry specific. We had to request some information about that to to learn more about that because we weren't familiar with this index. And I have that now. The other thing that is included rolling over is a buffer kind of rate protection for the the consumers here. And that's that they're limited to the adjustment of one and a half percent and fifty percent are not to exceed. They only get fifty percent of the CPI when when they request it. And then this limited capped at one and a half percent. So there's other agreements the Waste Management has of that nature don't have that. So we're fortunate to continue that forward. The uh, there was some, you know, in ten years, the insurance provisions are more than they used to be. Where before a million dollars enough, we're gonna ask for two million. Then there was some concern over the definition of solid waste and the city's recycling goals. To see these recycling goals kind of mirror with the county's program, the solid waste program with the county. So tho- those are all pretty workable kinds of things. We'd like to just bring that back to you at the next meeting for approval in ordinance form, so.
Sounds good.
If there's any any question that I anticipated to be too controversial, so.
All right. Don't hear none, so I'm gonna go ahead and uh, we're gonna review the new city engineer job description. Mohammed.
Good afternoon, can you hang in?
Yes, you can.
Sorry, uh, Mr. Mayor and City Council members, I would like to first of all acknowledge and take a moment to thank Sue Nelson for her uh role here at the city and her tenure and and all her support and hard work with the Public Works Department. She's been a great asset, she's been a great team member to get me on board and help me out with this transition, which today marks actually my first full month anniversary. So it's exciting. And and with that said, I would like you to consent approval for the city engineer job description that you guys have before you uh for our next step to finalize this transition for uh this particular position.
I've got a comment on this. There are some things under special requirements and also required minimum qualifications, which are more apropos in the eighteen fifties. And I mean, it mentions things like word processing and spreadsheets, nothing about AutoCAD or wearing the ad lights. I mean, the level of description of what you should do strikes me more as an engineering tech rather than a chief engineer. Yeah, these are time honored things, but we, you know, we're not talking about drones and many of the other operations that are now possible. It it's just the fact we've got a bunch of silly things uh indexed. I mean, we know you use tools and they're electronic now. And there's a whole host of why we have a list of some of these things. I think it's just silly.
Thank you, Council Topaz. Uh, the the expectation, I guess, on the city engineer level is really not to specifically mention every single tool in in the engineering world. It's kind of the expectation at this level to know, obviously working with CAD and every other uh toolset. But you know, if if that's something you'd like to see uh updated more than happy to do.
Yeah, I mean, because it's just, can you use the tools in a drawing board like? We don't ink drawings anymore. And it's, it's some of the descriptions just outdated. We do the same process, but we just use different tools. And as I say, some of this is specific to particular tools which seem silly.
Thank you.
So uh, Mr. Topaz, do you want us to change that language to as example? As examples, because we can go on, just like uh our our Public Works Director suggested, we can go on forever talking about the myriad of of uh tools and applications that a city engineer uses. So, you know, citing some, for example, I think was a was a given on this.
I would disagree because the process of going so far. That's, it's just, you know, one of those things that I think were much further technologically and saying some of these things actually limits us backwards. That's really what I'm saying is that part of the wording should just be updated really well. And it's not doesn't change the job, it just talks about the tools we're using to do it. I mean, a lot of times you can use a theodolite now with the satellites. You can hit Google and some of the GPS traveling equipment that we have. You can put things within a centimeter and you can't see anything else because you're in the middle of the woods. We, that's the type of, you know, discussion we really don't need. We just need to have somebody who's familiar with the engineering tools of civil engineering.
One thing, Council Topaz, I can add is we we obviously went through the process of running the job description by our department. And then also uh, one step farther is running this job description by the Lane Council, I believe, is the name. That which they also conduct a full review of the job description prior uh bringing up to your uh before you. So we've done that as well. And as mentioned, if if any particular tool you'd like to see, I'm more than happy to revise and update.
I meant particularly A2, I'd just like to be a lot more general rather than be so specific. That that's all I'm saying. It's, we know you're using the tools. Uh, I don't, you know, you got, you don't have to use a Hewlett Packard nine nine three such and such. You know, you know how to use surveying equipment with its electronic satellite digital or a ruler. I know you know how to do that. Why do I spell that out so much? One thing is says you're a graduate engineer. I know you, you went through all of this prior to that. I mean, any engineer does. So i- it's just too many words in my uh view of thinking.
Okay, and uh, thank you for your view.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, uh, any other um comments on the job description of the city engineer? For Mohammed. Okay, I'm not hearing any Mohammed, thank you very much.
Yeah, very welcome, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Well, I mean, I I'm just, as you mark, this is like the month mark of you starting work. And um, for the city of St. Helens and the fact that you're before the council and like this is the very second meeting that you could have attended. I'm impressed by how quick you're kind of getting on things and doing some housekeeping. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Council, uh, Council Carlson, appreciate it.
Yeah, I just appreciate it because, you know, a lot of people be like, I'll do it later, I'll do it later. I got to figure it out and jumping in there and getting tackling some of the problems and doing some housekeeping. I really appreciate that. So thank you for that.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yeah, I will give you a little bit of update. I know that Mohammed grabbed the bull by the horns and is actually uh doing a lot behind the scenes. So that's good.
Thanks.
Yep. Thank you, Mohammed.
My pleasure.
All right. Yep, all right, uh, let's go with the strategic action plan updates. Matt?
I do just have a couple of quick things and then it's gonna slide right into John's administration report nicely. We had a final recommendation meeting with the Public Safety Facility Committee last night. They had their third meeting where they made a recommendation and they will be presenting that recommendation to the city council in January. And to give you kind of a quick update, we wanted to keep your abreast of, you know, whether whether you take the recommendation and how we move forward. We know that no matter what is decided, that there's going to be a public engagement process. And we want to in at least inform you at this moment that we are working behind the scenes very much on what that engagement process is. It will also involve, you know, potentially looking at uh spending a little bit more money to do this right and make sure that we're doing everything that we can to be successful. So just wanted to give you a quick update that. And we're continuing to work with Mackenzie who um has done a lot of the initial planning and we've contracted them out to do some additional work because we know that the building technically is in a flood zone right now. And so they're going to be working with Jacob and the state and FEMA on ways to mitigate that risk through through a couple of different opportunities to make sure that that site is the right site that we're uh looking at for that public safety facility. So we'll keep working on that and keep your abreast of any changes. And don't hesitate to contact myself, John, or Rachel, or Brian. And you'll start to see a lot more information coming out that coming in January. The other quick thing I wanted to mention with you, though, was regarding the Budget Committee. And this is something that um I didn't really think about until uh we just had a recent opening. Ginny Carlson's uh Budget Committee seat is Leah Thompson. And she has decided not to renew for another term. And typically, and I think this kind of dives back into how we've done things for the past twenty plus years on the Budget Committee. And that is how we appoint Budget Committee members. Typically, in my last four years or so, we've appointed a few different members. And typically, it is the city counselor that goes out and finds that person. We don't really do any public engagement process or application process or interview process. And that is something that we do in all other commissions, like the Planning Commission, the ACC, the Parks and Trails Commission. There is an application process, a at least some kind of community engagement process through Facebook, social media, uh, the newspapers of advertising for uh that open seat on the Budget Committee. And then they would obviously do the application, then we, they would do a potential interview. And I would like to see if the city council is open to um sort of a process change for the Budget Committee specifically to act more like um the other commissions and how their members are appointed. So we would go through that application process, just like every other commission does. As opposed to right now, currently the practices of Ginny's seat has an opening. It's her responsibility to go find somebody and bring that person in. And there's no interview process, there's no um kind of procedural process like we do in other commissions. And so I just wanted to kind of feel the city council out on what their thoughts on that. I see it as kind of getting rid of the image that sometimes the city can have of being a good old boys' club. Whereas you have to know somebody to get in. And I think this process change, although albeit very small, can have a a pretty decent impact on showing transparency in the community and also pulls back to some of our strategic plans as far as community and and community engagement and encouraging people to get more involved within their community. So I'm happy to take any thoughts or questions you may have.
Good presentation, uh, Matt. I I appreciate what you're saying. I think you could follow up on some details of the I think you could follow up on some details of exactly how that person would be voted in or how they would be appointed. I I understand your interview process and it drops off there. Then what? Who decides? How are they? How do they decide? And that's a that's a concern that I have at this point. I think it's really a good, a really good idea to go forward with especially more transparency that way. And I I I like that. I like that a lot.
Correct. And and thank you, Councilor Gordon, for your comment. To answer your question, I see this as following the same process as the Planning Commission and Parks and Trails Commission, where a council member that is overseeing that commission. Now, Budget Committee is sort of unique where we have all of you part of the Budget Committee. So maybe whoever that appointee technically is could sit on that interview committee to review the applications along with one or two Budget Committee members. That would be up to the committee on how they want to proceed. So I would envision probably myself or John, the council member, and then maybe one other commission member to go through that interview process and application process for any people that are interested in that. And then it would eventually come back to the city council for an official appointment, just like every other commission does.
I'm I, you know, I like the idea. I personally put it out there in a public meeting when I was ready to appoint. And I had Claire Cat and I forget her name. Her sister is Beck, Jessie Beck. But so I forget her first name, but they came to me and we actually discussed it amongst three of us. And we decided that Claire and that there was future that I would keep her, the other gal in mind. I think her name was Sarah. I should I apologize for not remembering her name. But I I think that is fair. Put it out there. Let people who are interested get involved. It's one thing that is civic duty that you can put down as far as on a resume or whatever. I absolutely agree. And budgeting is very confusing. And so it is. So.
So there's no, John and Rachel and I were talking about this earlier today, and there's no real municipal code section that we could find in our charter that really identifies the the Budget Committee and their rules and responsibilities. We believe it kind of really falls onto the ORS and the Oregon Revised Statutes. And so this process change is really something internal. And so, Mayor, if you're okay with putting this on for an evening decision, and then at tonight, you would have the decision of making that internal change process. And we would roll that right into the opening that we have right now. That is Leah Thompson.
Sure.
So I'll put that on.
Anybody, everybody okay with that? Sounds good.
I'd like to see it on paper so I could read. I mean, I don't understand it. I have to agree with you. We got to make a change. I'd like to know more details about it.
Basically, he's the same. Let's take it away from the individual councillor to say, I want to get Joe Smith, my next door neighbor on there.
Yeah, I totally agree with that, Rick. I just, if there were any other details beyond that, I I would just want you to be able to cogitate on. But I absolutely agree on that.
It would still be a nomination to us and we'd still have to accept it. So we still have the final say as a council as a whole.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So I have a question during a, pardon me, I have a question during the interview process. Okay, so on the interview process, if there's three people who interview or two people who interview and you pick one, does the council still get to hear any kinds of issues of who the two people who didn't make your recommendation, who they are and what their background was and that kind of thing? So is, you know, we still are into a bit of a a good old boy kind of thing unless it becomes a little more transparent and out there a bit. So that's, you know, that's one of the nice things about bringing the two or three people to the to the for the final recommendation to decide amongst the council. Not in particular the interviews, because sometimes those things might be a little more personal. I'm not certain. But I think the more, I think the more transparent we can be through the through that process and however you rationalize it, is is going to be to everyone's advantage. The council, people who came aboard, and in particular the councilman who was basically the suggested to appoint that a person. It's 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 tough. It's tough. Because whoever you appoint, you go, oh, I see you appointed your friend. I see you appointed this person or that person. You know, what's the deal? So I think that that just helps a lot. That helps the council a tremendous amount.
Hey, Matt, how many years are we as budget? Is it two or is it four?
I I want to say two.
I knew it was more than two.
Yeah, it's three.
I should know that.
Okay, so how many, obviously, we have five seats, right? And how often are they in the rotation? Is it two a year and then more on one year?
I'm pulling it up as we speak.
It's two a year and then three the other year.
Yeah.
Well, why why don't we just go ahead and just do like a type of interview process? And and just have a a recommendation, you know? And then if we council chooses not to, we I think that's the best way to go. It's only once a year. And applicants could come in even at the tail end of this meeting or
I'm I'm a little confused at what you're asking. Mayor, are you asking to do a new Budget Committee every single year?
No, 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 no. But it's two on one year and then three on another year, right?
Correct.
So I'm just saying. Do you want, do you want them to appear before the council?
Well, if we had a bunch of people, I think, you know, council and staff and just give their spiel of why they want to be on the Budget Committee. They're in a public meeting. They can give public testimony of why they want to serve on the, why do they want to serve? I want to know. Right. And there's that's the most accountability right there.
That's what that was my question. So appear before the council. And when we appear before the council, there's also staff there. So I, yeah, that's that was my question. Yes. I like that.
I I like that idea too, Matt. So what, do we give 30 day notice for those other committees for applications for open to close? Or is it 60 days? We still have 60 days if we were to put it out soon. But this is kind of weird because somebody resigned. So this is a field position.
And we have one, we have one that was up that, and that was councillor Locks appoint you, which is Michelle Damas. And she came in at the very end of a previous term of somebody who left, so she hasn't even met yet. But she she can, wanted to stay on for the next three years. So there is an automatic appointment for her already kind of on the books, so to speak. But as we come around to the next round, is what I'm understanding, that we can go through this interview process.
Yeah, yep.
I think councillor, Ginny, do you have a question for me?
Yeah, I just overall, just my my overall feeling about commissions and appointments and applications is that I think that if we're going to really move forward in an inclusive, equitable way, I don't think that the way we're currently marketing positions or how we're advertising for them is the most successful. Every time I've had a planning commission open, we have run ads and run ads and run ads and get nothing or almost nothing. And I just wonder if there's a better strategy. Something that I had talked to Jacob and Jenny about is really approaching it more like you would a team sport. To be like, always be taking in applications and get people's interest throughout the year and not wait till we have an open spot. And then it's kind of like, you know, you got your your starting five and then you got your bench. So it's like, these are a list of people that are interested and be building that and building that in other ways by going to other nonprofits, going to the school district and looking at ways people want to volunteer. Because a lot of people, I know we have it in meetings, it's in the papers, it's on social media, but people, for whatever reason, don't see it always. And I just would like to see us to work on, you know, maybe it's not for this specific position, but look at what are other strategies that other communities are doing to get volunteers for commissions and for planning commissioners? How are they doing it? How are they keeping a good, interested, vested, competent volunteer base? And I just, I would like to see us to have a serving on a commission to be exciting and vital and engaging. And I think that we do a lot of good things, but we could do better. So that's just my input. So it's not the same hundred, lack of better term, old people that have lived here forever. It's like, I'd like to have kind of have our commissions better represent our citizenry. People of all ages, people of all backgrounds, people of all inputs, so we get a more well-rounded picture. That's all I have. I just, I just have had in my eight years on council, we have struggled to find when we have an opening on planning commission, we struggle to fill it. So that's all.
That's all I had, Mayor.
All right. Okay, now let's go to our city administrator report, Mr. John Walsh.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
Yeah, the the change there is it's a pretty subtle change, but it, you know, I think it promotes, you know, open, inclusive, transparent, you know, process. And it gets more people, there's more voices and hopefully it brings more people to get involved with government. So as part of my administrator's report, I want to draw your attention to the regular session tonight. Under the award and bid contract, there's two items there. McCormick Park Playground Equipment, and there's also the Columbia Pacific Food Bank Renovation Project. And the second one, first, the the food bank is a project that the city sponsored with Clean Development Block Ramps. We have the bandwidth to be able to manage projects like that, so we're sponsoring that. And we're going to be seeing a lot of things coming out of the ground this year, and that's it's going to be one of those projects. One of those projects, yeah. The first, the McCormick Park Playground Equipment, there's information in your packet. At some point real soon, I'm going to turn it over to Sue, but there's a decision point that's at at the time of press, we didn't have the recommendation from the Parks Commission, which there's a solicitation process that you can you can review. That talks about the process they went through, who they recommended, and then this price point range of this budget of, I think it was 250,000, 300,000 budget target that we were looking at. If Matt can unmute her, I think we're going to be pretty impressed by the two final proposals. And look at that recommendation for tonight, so you are more fully informed on that. Because there isn't one at this point. Need to talk about it first.
John, wasn't there also a okay on a grant to the STEM program over to library?
That is, there's a number of things on the agenda, and that is, I believe, under a master services agreement with the ESDs. Yeah, that the agenda was revised to reflect that as well. I'd like to jump over to Sue Nelson, talk about that, maybe get back to the other couple of other things I have to talk about.
So, yeah, I don't know if anybody had any questions with any of the proposals. Since the Parks Commission met on just Monday and we had to turn in all of this information last week, the actual council action sheet doesn't reflect what the Parks Commission recommended, but they are recommending the play and park structures, which is the second, the second proposal that is listed in in your evening packets.
If Matt wants to pull that up, if you can, off the regular session agenda, share the screen.
You're putting me on the spot.
I I have it up if you want that.
No, I can get it up here.
Okay. Is that the regular session or the work session? Yeah.
Regular session.
Yeah.
If anybody's watching, this is how you find our packets for city council meetings. And depending on your speed and lack of fiber in the community determines how fast things will come up. Okay, here we go. Let's believe, is it the next one, Sue, that you want to look at?
Next one, yeah. This was, this was one of the two that the Parks Commission liked.
Well, I like the idea of seeing the one that we did pick.
Well, we wanted to make sure that everyone had the opportunity to look at the two highest scoring proposals because these, both of these scored significantly higher than the other proposals that were received. The both of them included additional elements over and above what we asked for. We asked for a very minimum of specific items. We wanted, we wanted a ramped structure. We wanted to make sure there were two slides at a minimum. We wanted to make sure there was a, that the play equipment covered a wide variety of abilities and age groups. We wanted to make sure there was musical instruments included. We wanted one of these basket swings. Also replace the swing set with at least six new bays and some sort of a spinning feature, which is what the little triangle, there you go. This particular proposal included all of those with two different play structures. You see the smaller one pictured on the right hand side. That's for ages two to five. And then the larger structure here with the ramped facility and the multiple slides, that is for ages five to 12. This also had a, the the little tower on the end is not accessible by a ramp, but the majority of the structure is accessible with a wheelchair scroller. And, you know, then we have the hanging bars over to the, right behind the play structure for the smaller, the younger ages are also some of those little rocking you know, the little animal. I I don't know what they're called specifically.
Bounty bits?
Bounty, there you go. So those are for, you know, really young users, another little spinning device. And then, Matt, if you can scroll down to a couple of the other views, it shows this same, the same grouping from different vantage points. So here's another vantage point of of this equipment. And let's see, keep on going down here. So you can see here off to the right of the musical, there's drums and so one thing, when we can see this swing, that you can see the basket swing over to the left, the spider web climbing item. There's lots of climbing elements here. And that's one thing that Thad said is very requested, our our climbing features. So we've got all different kinds of climbing features. We've got the balancing stepping little, you know, different level steps. And then also around the structure, there's also a lot of tactile things that you can go and mess with with, you know, your hands and have, yeah, visual and tactile experiences with those. And let's see, let's, I think there's another view that's got a really good view of the swing set.
This uh, this setup is awesome, Sue.
It's over and above what we asked for. Okay, here's a great view of the swing set. So you can see that there's, they they're showing, we asked for two regular swings, two adaptive swings and two infant swings. And then they, what they did was three regular swings, two adaptive swings, one infant swing that also has the seat for an adult to be able to sit and swing with the infant and then clear over to And then clear over to the right is another infant seat, um, that's just off to the side. So I thought this was an excellent way to expand the swing set and still include all the, you know, all the elements and more that, that was asked for. So this particular company, they do a lot of research in all-inclusive pieces, and they think that this is one of the most advanced inclusive setups that they have put together.
The sensory offerings for this, for the rocking, swinging, bouncing, climbing are things that so many kiddos that are on the ADHD spectrum, on the autism spectrum are lagging behind their peers and people don't think that that matters, but this kind of play can change their lives. And not everybody can afford to go to a fancy place or not everybody has access to the type of therapies that help those kids. But this is gonna help kids' mental health and their physical health and help our school system have better outcomes because the kids will have the tools they need to be healthy young people.
Yeah.
Good remarks, Jenny. And then, uh, don't forget the zip line, heaven's sake.
Yeah, so there is a zip line. Um, the, the only drawback on that is that it, they, they don't offer and it's, and it's a little bit difficult to find an adaptive seating option to be able to put on the, on the zip line. They said that there's other structures that they could include instead of the, the, an actual zip line like this that would have an adaptive seat.
They put in a zip line at Campbell Park or at, um, McBride School.
Oh.
A few years ago in the back when they did their playground upgrade, it'd be interesting to know the feedback of what they, what their uses of how, what kind of kids are using it.
Yeah.
What kind of kids enjoy it to kind of just, it's right here in our community and they could say, oh, it was really dangerous or they could say, oh, they figure it out.
That's, yeah.
Those kids tend to just figure stuff out.
Anyway, they're looking into some options that we could try to get some sort of a, a more inclusive seating option.
Yeah.
On that, um, or, or some potential other options. And, um, again, the, the, we gave them a target price. This exceeds the target price. Their, their, um, strategy here was, I'm, I'm sorry about the background noise. I don't have a door anymore that I'm close. Strategy was if, if it was just too, if it was not affordable, we could scale back, we could remove a slide, we could remove one of the rocking features, we could remove some of the smaller play items to try to get it closer to that target price. So
Sorry, is there an opportunity because, um, not everybody knows that the swings that are currently at Campbell Park were paid for by the, um, the Rotary?
Right.
If there's an opportunity that we could put out there that like maybe some price points on some of these features, that would be, there'd be a sponsorship opportunity. So maybe Inroads wants to, or, you know, Wanda wants to say care about the kids or maybe Legacy, you know, or somebody wants to sponsor one piece of equipment, that there'd be an opportunity for, for that kind of thing. I was surprised when I brought my story about how important the swings were, that that story would go to the Rotary and they just bring back a check and do it.
Wow, that's, that's a great, uh, great suggestion. Yeah.
I just thought that might be a way to give our community what they want. And I said, sometimes people, you know, if they're not asked, you don't know. And people want to be a part of good things. They want to be a part of the good change. And I mean, I don't, you know, I don't know whether, you know, it's COVID and stuff, but there are businesses that are, you know, it's the end of the year or maybe in the 2021, they're looking for that, that write-off, that give back. And I mean, the city does qualify as a nonprofit.
Yeah.
And I mean, you know, how would it be to be that's the zip line from Dinah Nobel or whatever it is? That it would be super cool that people could show their community they care and it would be real and tangible and permanent. And that's usually what granters are looking for. Just the idea to put it out there rather than, rather than trim out something that's important and awesome.
Yeah.
How much over budget are we talking?
Um, right now it's probably close to $40,000 over what our target budget was. Now, um, Matt, I believe says that there's still some room because there's some other projects that were originally targeted for the money that was set aside for park improvement. Um, and also we have some SDCs that we can put into this project since it's in McCormick Park, it qualifies for SDC. There may be, uh, there may be enough funding available to be able to accommodate all of the proposals.
I'm just looking at that and I'm thinking, wow, what, what that would do to McCormick Park. I mean, that would, that would be the final step. We have three different covered shelters down there, a staged covered shelter, a ton of concrete. It's worth the extra 40. That looks awesome. I like it.
Yeah, it, it would help if we had community support like Jenny mentioned. Um, however, like Sue mentioned, the, these funds that we're using to pay the majority or all of it, if we need, if we really need to do come from system development charges that our developers pay when you build a house or, or anything. So, um, and McCormick Park is one of only a couple of parks that are SDC eligible for funds. Um, and that goes back to how we formulate and categorize parks in our master plan. So, um, these funds were, there's a little bit more available because we had originally planned, if you remember a couple, two, three years ago, when we talked about, uh, a $500,000 investment for parks, one of the parks that, one of the ideas for McCormick Park was to add a sport court. And in lieu of doing that, we've decided to, um, not go that route, at least at this moment, and help put some of those funds toward a larger park and a better park that Sue has come up with, with the Parks and Trails Commission.
Sue, there's one item that I'm wondering that you should have there. Do you have some places where we get a good water supply so we can hose this down?
There is a hose just right at the covered shelter that is just very close to where this play structure is.
So we do have a watch down ability then?
Yes.
Oh, good. Cause a lot of times that's the one, one thing we need and it's over far, far away. So good.
If I could, if you could touch on that, they, if, if council approved this, the schedule and when we might see this come to light.
Yeah. Uh, yeah. And then the other thing is that, uh, just for you folks to know, we're hoping that, that one of these proposals, this is the one that the Parks Commission is recommending, can be approved tonight. If it can't be approved tonight and it carries over into next year, all the prices go up um, after the first of the year. So this would go up, he thought between three and five percent.
I'd like to weigh in at this point and just say that, that the, uh, Parks Commission did diligently do their work and, uh, reviewed both of these proposals, looked at this one as the, the one that seemed to uh, win overall support. And, uh, I, I just, I just want the rest of the council to know that this has been well-studied by, uh, by the volunteers who serve on the Parks Commission.
And also on the, the initial review committee, it included, um, Shawna from the Parks and, or from the Recreation Program and the Park Commissioners, uh, myself and also who else was on that committee? Thad, of course, from the Parks Department.
Hey, sounds like a pretty good group. It's been through.
It has.
A lot of different perspectives, yeah.
Yeah, and they looked at, they looked at warranties, they looked at craftsmanship of the way that it was manufactured. They looked at a lot of things. There are a lot of components to it. Thank you, Sue, for doing this uh, a wonderful job and, and, uh, working through that.
And John, John, I think wanted to do a follow-up on timelines and stuff, is what I heard.
Well, I just wanted to put it out there that, you know, if it's approved, then when, when, when would we see it constructed?
Ah, okay. Um, that is one of the questions that I asked. So they, the company who manufactures this, they actually closed down in the beginning of, of January so that they can clean and recalibrate all of their equipment so that anything that is manufactured during the following year is, um, you know, done completely to specifications. So the earliest they'd be able to start manufacturing this would be at the end of January. They anticipate that it would be delivered by the middle of March. And then they have a installer that they typically work with in the Portland region. And he would be able to be, you know, he's been notified of this project and, and already provided some input on costs for that, which is included in the, in their proposal. And, um, that would likely be scheduled for, um, you know, starting as soon as the equipment started to be delivered. So probably the end of March and April, and it would take approximately a month to install, weather, weather depending, but for the most part, they can do most of the installation in, in virtually any type of weather.
Oh, it could be ready late spring.
Yeah.
Wow, wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's exciting. I just wanted to.
It's real, it's really exciting. And that's actually, the manufacturing timeline is actually quite a bit faster than I anticipated. So that, that was, I was excited to hear that we could get it all in probably in March.
Your big problem on timing is still the virus. We, not knowing how that's going. And once you get started, get it done. Don't worry about when it's gonna get done. I think the important timing is when you buy it.
You're the ones buying it.
As I say, that's the important time.
Okay, so I'll, I'll carry on here. Um, so switching back to my report here, you know, the last meeting in December is usually a time of, uh, you know, feel-good appreciation, kind of angsty, kind of outgoing, help the old and the new. And, uh, you know, this year's probably resonates a little stronger with me, but I'll, I'll save my remarks for the tonight for the, for the send-off of Council Lock and then Counselor Carlson. But I, I did want to talk on the number of projects that are going to be coming up in 2021. There's, we're gonna be seeing not only the, the food bank and this, this play equipment potentially, but, but also some good progress on the, you know, the, the new police station, public safety facility, the waterfront projects as far as the Riverwalk and street and extensions and utility extensions for, you know, Strand Street and First, First Avenue, the first street. We're making some really good progress at the industrial business park, working on strategies forward to get utilities served to that property. And parphinization in that nature, we'll look at that over the coming months. And then, you know, circling back on the, uh, the central, central waterfront project and how that might be a possibility to you know, so, so solve issues in our community long-term. So but the one common thread that runs through all of that is communications. And communications is something that we've been putting more and more, leaning on more and more. Uh, you know, Crystal Farm, Crystal has been our communications person, start off half-time and she's moved into full-time. And really that, there's more of a need than just that. And even without the projects, there's more of a need of communicating all the programs activities going around with, you know, police and recreation and, you know, planning commission and all of that. So I'm going, going to propose that we, what I'd like to do is add a halftime communications um, labor effort to, to help move all of these projects on. It's probably not enough. But halftime through the end of the fiscal year, so for this next, next six months going forward, and we'll revisit it through the budget process as well. And the, the funding mechanism would be out of the community development funds, can touch us pretty heavily on all, all of those, those projects. Ask that the ca- council gets, give that some consideration. So.
I like the idea. Everything that you talked about, uh, uh, we have to get the word out, we have to keep the citizens in the loop and keep it in the forefront of their mind. I, I like it.
It's a really exciting time to be a part of the St. Helens community. It's, it's, there's a lot gonna be coming out of the ground here real soon. The, uh, request for proposals for the Riverwalk, we got six really highly qualified firms. Six, six for the, the Riverwalk and three for the street utility extension. So we're pretty pleased with that and going through the review process right now. That'll be underway in February.
That's. And independents kind of had that person that led the way as far as community development in their, just in their urban renewal. And we got more than that. We've got, you know, I mean, industrial to waterfront to locks to um, grants, sidewalks going in, uh, new park equipment, uh, shoot, a ton of stuff going on.
It's a little overwhelming when you think about it all.
Trying to do a new police station, yes.
And we want people to know about it, share, share about it and appreciate it. It would be my recommendation to do that.
Well, it's well-supported here.
Mayor, if you're okay, I can put that on for the evening session.
Yeah.
I think that's it. I think I'll stop there.
All right. Okay, uh, do we have stuff for executive session, John?
Nothing. I don't have anything in particular this, I will at the next executive session have things to talk about.
Okay.
Matt's waiting.
All right. Yeah, we, we do have a, um, something to talk about as far as the property transaction.
Okay, so we will, as previously announced, be going to the executive session, 192660.
Hey, Rick, can I finish up something? We got a spot here for comments. Can I throw something in now?
Uh, you, well, what do, yeah, what do you got?
Okay, uh, I sent, I sent to John. What?
It's not.
Visitor comments.
It's other business. It's other business. It says other business.
Other business.
I get it.
And it's one of the projects that John's kind of working on. Uh, anyway, one of the things that's coming up, and I, I've got a map of the toxic waste in, in the river in front of the, um, mill. John asked me to hold it and I will hold it right now. But one of the things that the council is gonna have to find out in great detail from John is the toxic cleanup of the river, uh, out in front of the, uh, mill. And one of the things, uh, I just got done reading a group of articles from the Venonia Voice about how timber has treated this end of Oregon. And it goes, this is a historic thing. And St. Helens is kind of a great example of how the timber industry has not been kind to the people of, uh, Oregon. They've taken our trees, but left us some terrible legacies of what they've done. And another article I read, which was written 50 years ago, is how the timber industry has not given any money even to schools. I mean, most of the big timber industry is owned from out of state and they haven't done anything for Oregon. Okay, now back to the toxic, uh, problem. The company that owns the mill now is discussing with DEQ about how to handle it. And if they're only interested in their interest, it means they want to spend as little money as possible. And one of the possibilities is we lose the waterfront. And I want John in the next couple of meetings to explain how bad the situation could get so the council can voice their opinions on how to back him up and what we should do. Is that a fair statement, John?
We are educating ourselves on the, on the issue for sure. Yes.
And you will bring it up to the council.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, okay. So, um, as I was getting ready to say, um, we'll be going, following the adjournment of this, we'll be going into the executive session, RS 1926602E, uh, real property transaction. And that only, so with that, we are adjourned.